Okay, good evening. Thank you for being here. If I could ask all the gentlemen to remove their caps, we're in the American Legion Hall, and that's one of their rules that they like to abide by. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And tonight, the flag is directly outside the front door, so I'll ask everybody to stand and then we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening Supervisor Graham's not being attended, she has the flu, and so we've asked him not to attend to spread what he has. The next thing, before moving on to the public hearing, I want to make a couple announcements. The Harden County Speaker sign up was at the podium, and we will go through the list of speakers. When our Board Secretary, or tonight, I'll call your name, please come to the podium, state your name, and where you live for the official record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak, and at the end of the three minutes, our timekeeper will let you know when your time is expired. Please enunciate, speak clearly into the mic. We are recording the meeting tonight for the official record. Micah and her crew have done their best to get a system set up so we can get the best recording possible. And then I ask that everybody's comments remain respectful and germane, as the Harden County policies states. So, we'll go ahead and move to item number three, asking for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll go ahead and second that. I have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this point, we'll move to item number four, public hearing.
Public hearing? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing.
I'll second that. I have a motion to second any further discussion. Hearing none. The first speaker I have is Kent Kraus. Please, approach the podium, please.
Thank you. My name is Kent Kraus, and I'm with the Pinnacle Group in Iowa Falls, Iowa. We prepared the permit application for Kyle Janes and his family. Kyle is here tonight, as well as the entire family. But what I thought I'd start with, just a quick overview of the site. What we've done, or what Kyle's done, is has purchased an existing site that was damaged in a windstorm about a year and a half ago. And with that, the producers left the site, took the animals out of the site, and decided to ultimately sell the site. Kyle purchased the site and has actually cleaned the lagoon out of all previous manure that was still left in the site, and has proceeded to get the approvals to take the existing buildings down and eliminate that old site that's been abandoned. With that, this site was eligible to operate under the old separation distances. This site, even by today's standards, scores very well. And so what we'll be talking about tonight are, as we permit this site and score this site under the Master Matrix, is scoring it by today's rules. So, it would be just like a new site, a greenfield site, that's been started from scratch. We won't be using any grandfather distances. With that, what we permitted is a 5,400-head swine facility. It'll have two buildings, they'll be deep-pitted, and they'll be roofed, so there will no longer be any outside manure storage, everything will be in a deep pit cement structure. The site is budgeted, or modeled, to produce a little over, or just under, 1,400,000 gallons per year. We've got fields in the plan right now to handle in excess of 1.4 million gallons. With that, though, Kyle has an extensive grain farming operation, and there are other acres that will be eventually included in that manure plan that he'll operate with his other facilities. Kyle and his family, they're family and they're employees, they do all the daily labor on these facilities, daily repairs, the loading of the pigs out of the facilities, they even do their own manure handling, so they're a hands-on family operation. With that, I think we're all here tonight to go through the Master Matrix, so I thought if you're ready, I can go through that Master Matrix scoring that we took on the site.
If we can utilize your time, three minutes, that would be fine.
If I can get it done in three minutes?
Yeah, well, your three minutes started, so we're...
Okay, we'll get her done here quick.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, what we do, we need 440 points to pass the Matrix. And so, with that, question number one, and we got 25 points for having an extra 300 feet to the closest residence. Closest residence will be to the south, minimum's 1,875 feet, we had 2,183. There are no public use areas within 4,001 feet, we got 30 points for that. The closest school, business, or church is 3,900 feet away, and that got us the maximum number of points on question number three of 30. Question number four, distance to water. Closest water is 2,403 feet, minimum distance is 500, we achieved 1,900 extra feet, we got 30 points on question number four. There are no critical public areas in the neighborhood, we got 10 points on question number six. We are gonna put, we are gonna cap the old existing well, it was right up next to the building and right up next to the lagoon. There will be a new well drilled, and that's gonna be, at least for right now, out on the east end of the property, 200 feet away from the new buildings, and we get 30 points for doing that. There's no major water sources within 3,501 feet, so we get 50 points for question number eight. We get 30 points for question number 10, because we're nowhere near any high-quality waters, quality water resources or protected water areas. Again, I mentioned it's gonna be two covered pits, we get 30 points for having covered manure storage. Kyle will utilize composting on those sites, and he'll use a cover, improved composter, and that scores us 30 points. Again, we talked about it'll be formed cement storage, we get 30 points for formed storage. It'll have a truck turnaround, so the trucks will be able to pull completely off the road, onto the site, turn around, and back into the loading docks and/or feed tanks. Kyle has had not only no administrative orders, but no DNR violations on any of his operations, so he gets 30 points for that. By size, we fall into the middle-sized category, so we get 10 points for question number 24. This site will utilize a pan water system, a cupped or a panned water, so we catch any water that drips out of the nipple water system, we get 25 points for that. And something that's a huge commitment is they've injected to, or they've committed to injecting the manures. It's still legal to broadcast manure on top of the ground in Iowa, they've actually committed to injecting it as they apply it or on the same date.
Time.
And that's a lifetime commitment to this facility.
Thank you, Kent, appreciate your time. The next speaker is Bob Higgins. Nick Shute, you'll be on deck.
Good evening, Bob.
How are you doing?
Very good, thank you.
You're up.
I'll go as quick as I can. Okay, let's start out by looking at the soil phosphorus concentrations of the field that the manure will be applied on, using documentations provided in the construction application. The phosphorus index calculation entry under erosion STP is 1.15, this translates to greater than 100 ppm. Iowa State University publication PM 1688 states greater than 31 ppm would be rated as very high in phosphorus, and recommends that no phosphorus be applied to this field. Why am I interested in this? I'll use Pine Lake as an example, but the concept translates to Tipton Creek, South Fork, Bear Creek, Iowa River, and all the other rivers, streams, and ponds in Harden County. Folks are upset about the condition of Harden County recreational waters. According to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, our own Pine Lake is impaired because excess phosphorus is entering the lake, primarily 86 percent from farm-field runoff. Just in the last several years, this lake has become unsuitable for fishing, boating, and swimming. In order to restore balance in this lake, a 63 percent reduction of phosphorus, reducing it to 0.6 pounds phosphorus per watershed acre, needs to take place. Looking at the P-index calculation for this facility, a phosphorus risk of 1.18 is reported, that's nearly two times the amount that Pine Lake can withstand. Looking at page two of the manure management plan, line eight indicates 182 pounds of phosphorus per acre will be applied each year. This field with a soil phosphorus concentration of greater than 100 ppm, ISU PM 1688 recommends no phosphorus be applied to these fields until the phosphorus concentration crops into the optimum range of 16 to 20 ppm. Publication SP 435, reducing nutrient loss sponsored by Iowa State University, Department of Agriculture, Agribusiness Association of Iowa, and Iowa Certified Crop Advisor, describes Iowa's strategy to reduce nutrient loss by not applying phosphorus until soil levels drop into the optimum range, and then only apply phosphorus at the crop removal rate. Looking at page two, line three, the crop removal rate is 63 pounds phosphorus per acre with harvest. So for this field, application rate of phosphorus will be 182 pounds per acre, three times the crop removal rate on a field that tests five times the optimum level for growing corn. Why does everyone pretend we don't know what is causing water quality problems? The RULE S2 page in the manure management plan shows average slope is 7 percent, contour is described as rows up and downhill, there are no strips or barriers, no diversion terraces, and no sediment bases. The sediment delivery ratio for this field is pretty small, at 6 percent. This means not much soil, which is believed to be a mess, major transport mechanisms for phosphorus will reach surface waters, but the result of the P-index calculation is still high enough to cause problems with Harden County lakes, rivers, and streams.
Time.
I'd like to continue, I think he had eight minutes.
He had six, yep.
Chair recognizes you. Bob, go ahead and finish, and then I'll definitely add this to the comments to the DNR number, okay, Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, see the floor to you, Bob.
Okay, it's high enough to cause problems with Harden County lakes, rivers, and streams. So even though we've got low erosion coming off these fields, it still has a high enough P-index to cause these problems. Why is that? As can be seen in the index calculation, the transport mechanism for phosphorus has shifted from soil erosion component to water runoff component due to high concentrations of phosphorus buildup. Plain and simple, when you put too much phosphorus on the soil, nature will find a way to move it downstream. If this soil tested at optimum levels for growing corn, the P-index calculation would be less than 0.3, far lower than the amount needed to correct problems with our lakes, rivers, and streams. Spreading the manure at a rate to lower phosphorus concentrations into the optimum level will fix the problems with water quality. ISU publication PMR 1003, using manure for crop production provides application recommendations along with calculation examples. It states, "An additional consideration is what portion of the needed fertilization will be supplied from manure to meet the full crop nutrient requirement, or a partial requirement from manure and the remaining from fertilizer." This is an important consideration, because manure contains multiple nutrients, and a manure rate to supply the most efficient nutrient can oversupply other nutrients. Also, manure application to meet the least efficient or most environmentally restrictive nutrient application can result in undersupply of other nutrients. In these cases, use of fertilizer in addition to manure application is necessary to appropriately meet all nutrient application requirements. This publication supports the view that the manure produced in this facility is not balanced for the soil and crops that are being raised. Clearly, the phosphorus to nitrogen ratio is far too high for application at the nitrogen rate. Where did I find this publication? It's part of the construction permit. Is this balanced approach followed in the manure management plan? No, it is not. If it were, we might be able to enjoy to use our lakes, rivers, and streams for fishing, boating, and swimming again. These natural resources are not usable in Harden County. Folks on both sides of the aisle are upset. Our educational institutions, agriculture agencies, and government organizations are scrambling to save face by endorsing the nutrient reduction strategy. Grow crop farmers are concerned that these nutrient practices will eventually bring government overregulation to their operations, whether manure or commercial fertilizer. I ask that you follow Iowa State University publication PM 1688, and to follow the publication that is included in the construction permit for the application of phosphorus. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Nick, you're up. Julie, you're next.
Hello. Hi, Nick. Thank you for having us at night, so that more people can come. My name's Nick Shute, I'm from Alden, I'm kind of a neighbor to this facility. Mr. Kraus said this scored very well on the Master Matrix. I do believe it scored a 440, which is minimum points. The applicant did not go out and above and beyond the required points. Another thing concerns me, violation, he said there's no violations, but I was told that there was a violation, failed to fire, file a Master Matrix in the past. I think that needs to be clarified. I do have objection, the applicant took 30 points for having manure storage structure that is formed. However, the required design, the operation, maintenance plan is still missing details, therefore 30 points should be deducted. The plan does not mention who will conduct routine inspections, or how often, that the applicant, my printer cut me off here. The applicant says inspections will take place before animals enter the building, but does not say how the capo will be inspected once the structure is in operation. The applicant does not mention what action should be taken when the structure needs repairs while in operation, what protocol will be taken after storms, or events, or who will perform these in what timeframe. I think this previous capo that we're looking at now, if those inspections were taken care of, it might have actually saved the rug. As far as repairs and timeframe, I'd hate to see another capo like this, not have a plan, and have another abandoned site in the future. The other deal I think we ought to look into is a closure plan. I don't believe there is a closure plan, I don't believe they took any points for that. But like I said, I'm a neighbor, I have capos to the north that I smell quite often with the north breeze, I have gravel road issues, I have the dust up around my house, my grass. I just think we're getting too concentrated in the area. Within a five to six mile radius, I'm looking at 25 to 30 capos. And I see Iowa Select has flagged another one down the road, so this will be addition to approximately four more buildings in my area. I just think that the area is too congested the way it is, and you know, when's enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, come on down, and Brian, you're up.
Good evening, I'm Julie Dunn, I'm from Eldora, and I want to speak about Master Matrix, item number 16, concerning composting dead animals. They ask 30 points for enhancement above minimum requirements. I believe this permit should be denied because their plan for 12 by 32 by 5-foot composting bin totaling 1,920 cubic feet is not adequate. According to two studies concerning mortality rates, the mortality rate of 2 percent enclosed in their information is inadequate. That 2 percent raise, or rate, was not even revised in the 2008 article reflecting rising swine mortality rates. And there was an article in the National, I can't find it, National Hog Magazine that indicated continuing rising mortality rates. In a peer-reviewed research from the Journal of Swine Health and Production, it's called a retrospective study of mortality in grow-finished pigs in multi-site production system, and this is a 2001, that it was peer-reviewed and accepted. The average mortality rate for all four years of this study was found to be 3.23 percent, which is well above 2 percent. The study kept track of sites from 1996 to 1999. Because bin space requirements depend on dead body number and weight, the compost bin that the Janes application sets forth will not meet minimum requirements considering this 3.23 mortality rate. Another publication from Virginia Cooperative Extension, publication number 414-020, composting for mortality disposal on hog farms, this is dated 2009, presents a more recent look at composting dead bodies of hogs on a hog factory site. One of their examples, and it's not my example, it's their chart, shows bin capacity needed for a finishing farm marketing 10,000 head annually. Now, from what I understand, this Janes facility will be a 5,400-head facility, and could in fact market a total of 16,200 head annually if they cycle three herds.
I'll go ahead and finish, Julie.
Finishers are generally held 112 to 115 days with a four-day stand empty period for cleaning and disinfecting. That schedule would allow for a total of 16,200 heads annually marketed. According to the Virginia paper produced in 2009, the farm death rate is 3 percent of all pigs placed, not the figure used in this application of 2 percent. Even at the figure of 10,000 hogs marketed annually, the minimum amount of bin space would be 2,480 cubic feet, well above 1,920 feet. If a mortality rate is not accurate, the bin capacity will not be sufficient, and proper composting of dead rotting bodies of hogs will not be possible. It's very precise a process. We're talking about stirring up dead rotting bodies with an N loader and turning them into compost. It needs to be done properly, we have to have the right percentages in order to have the correct bin space. Also, another point that I want to bring up is, I didn't see a worker safety plan included, so if that was included for 10 points, that needs to be taken off as well, because when you have a person who's going to be handling and taking care of all these dead bodies, they better know what they're doing, and they better have proper protection, clothing, face mask, whatever. And so, he will need protection. But yes, I do believe this needs to be denied on the fact that there will not be a proper bin storage, bin capacity, because there are also supposed to be matching secondary bins, the same amount as the primary bins. Also, two bins for storing the composting materials such as straw, sawdust, chopped-up corn stalks, whatever they're going to use. So I think that's mostly under that, thank you.
Julie, can I add your documentation to the DNR application?
You may.
Okay, thank you. Brian, you're next, thank you.
I don't have paperwork. I'm Brian Kraus, Alden address, President of Harden County Farm Bureau, but mostly, I'm here to speak about the Janes. I've known these guys since their dad was raising hogs. I've raised hogs my whole life, we've raised them beside those guys that all live too far from us. They have more experience on raising hogs than most people, anybody in this room. They are high-quality people, Kyle's been on the school board, they do the right thing. They've got the experience and knowledge. If they don't have the bedside, I don't know, they can always get a national byproduct or a dumpster. If there's a problem, they know how to fix it. They do their own maintenance, they do their daily maintenance, their shots, they take care of pigs, they know what they're doing. They're a high-quality hog-raising family, they've got the dad, the grandpa, the dad and the sons working. You don't get any better than that. You know, they're here for the long run, they're not gonna do anything halfway. They've got Pinnacle and Kent working with them, they do the right thing, they know what to do, and they know how to do it. If things aren't quite the way everybody thinks they are in the Matrix, or some professional doesn't think they are, they know how to fix it, they have hands-on experience, they're not gonna ruin anything, and they're gonna do it right. They are high-quality, and I would go with giving them the permit to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to add real quick, I do appreciate you guys having me tonight in the local area, so people for or against have the opportunity, and the ones that don't show up, they don't have an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I think, goes through our speaker list, I'm gonna go ahead and give these to our Board Secretary this time. Before we close the hearing, I just wanna have Don, Noel, and Jessica go ahead, and were there any other issues with the site that were of concern?
The only other concern we had was maybe the building site down from the site itself. It was, they were checking the DNR, was gonna see how long it's been vacated. My records in the office showed that it's been over at least 10 years, that we've had nobody actually having any homesteads or anything there, so...
Okay. Jessica?
Is that the one with the mobile home?
Yeah, the mobile home.
Is that, is that mobile home salvage, though? Is that...
Yeah, it's a salvage.
The title's been turned into a salvage.
It is. It hasn't been lived in for quite a while, I would say, so... DNR was gonna check with the original owner of the property, he lives in Dolls, so, and I didn't hear back from him yet, so...
I think what's their salvage, they can't go back, it's to be, I guess I don't know that.
No, it's a pretty old trailer, I mean, so...
Thank you. Jessica, did you have any written comments or phone calls?
Me, Jessica?
Yes.
I don't mean to talk to her, I thought you were talking to her. No, I'm unaware of any written comments received in our office prior to this hearing.
I just, I'm curious, Kyle, do you have anything that you would like to, in response to any of these comments? I mean, I just wanna give you a chance to answer any of your questions, okay?
We have existing combos in there, DNR permit. We have, sorry, DNR.
There's no other comments? Okay, and make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that. So I have a motion to second to close the public hearing and the discussion. Hearing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item we have on the agenda is a recommendation on your feeding operation construction permit, Kyle Janes, 125th Street site.
We have to review the application. I will go ahead and make a motion to recommend the law on the animal feeding operation construction permit for Kyle Janes.
I'll second that. I have a motion... I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Lee J.
Aye.
Motion passes. Other business? Yes.
I'd like to remind you, the supervisors, that if you take no points the way DNR reviews nothing.
Okay, duly noted. Other business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, I'll second that, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.